Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna bring the Milton Planning Board meeting of January 4th, 2022 to order. Right now, we're missing one member, which is Jonathan Newt. And I'm gonna replace him with Bob Grant. For public comment, this is a time of the meeting where anybody that has anything to say about anything other on the agenda or pending cases, feel free to speak. Not hearing any, I'm gonna call public comment calls and go on to approval of minutes of 12:21:21.
Make your motion to approve of the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Pro abstentions?
Abstained, I will.
Jonathan is not present. Okay, next on the agenda is the proposed zoning changes. The Gateway District and the Commercial Residential and High Density Residential Zoning District Revisions. We had this meeting last, our last meeting, but they noticed we didn't get out in time, so I recalled it again and I can see it. Bruce, would you like to do this presentation?
Sure, this meeting is about you guys in the audience here. We specifically invited you here because the planning board's considering two zoning amendments this year. And whether they, whether they go through does depend on the thoughts that you give the planning board tonight. But first, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna talk about how these zoning amendments came to be. I'm the town planner in Milton, my name is Bruce Woodruff. And the concepts for both of these zoning amendments really came from me. And one of them, and that's the one where we are taking all the frontage lots along Route 25 White Mountain Highway, I believe part of Silver Street, Dawson, I'm not remembering the one, oh Elm Street. And those lots that are frontage lots, the first 200 feet is zone, commercial residential or high-density residential. That's a zoning district that tells you what size lots you can have, what uses you can, that are allowed in those zoning districts, especially if you're gonna do new development. What's bad about it is that most of your lots go beyond 200 feet. So all of your lots in either of those two zones are split-zone lots. I'm gonna talk about what that means to you as a property owner in just a minute. In, generally speaking, when you're a planner, you listen to what planners say in the state, and sometimes you're a college and you learn some things. One of the very important things you learn is that when the people who did the zoning, wrote the zoning ordinance, that there, that are the regulations, and they laid out on the map of Milton, the zoning districts, and you can look at it out there, it's on the wall as you go out the door. The zoning districts were laid out, especially in those zones. Residential, or Commercial Residential, CR, and High Density Residential, HDR.
Yes.
High Density, yes. They did it the easy way. The easy way is to take an imaginary line, like a road right-of-way line, and then draw a parallel line, a discreet number of feet out, and say, "That's our, that's our commercial residential zone." The rest of your lots, for the most part, and I think for all of its part, are in the low-density residential district. So this is my concept that I brought to the planning board. They've heard the reasons. The reasons, and I'm gonna read them to you in a minute, for doing this, are good for you as property owners, and they're also good for potential commercial development in those CR zones. I mean, what can you do in the first 200 feet on every lot? I think it was disingenuous and a bit lazy for when zoning was laid out in the first place. This is a fix for a problem. It's up to you guys to think about this, and I'm gonna read some things to you now, so that after I read them, you'll be able to ask questions. I'm gonna get up in a minute and I'll show you some maps. But thinking about all this, I went to the New Hampshire Planners Association and pulled some stuff from the New Hampshire Planners Association, the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and there's a, there's a webpage called Community Planners. Split-zone parcels can be a headache for property owners and practitioners. In general, a split-zone parcel is a piece of land located in two or more zoning districts and divided by a zoning district boundary line. Often, these split-zone parcels are found at interfaces between commercial and residential uses and other areas of transition in the municipality. Throughout New Hampshire, most zoning codes provide various ways to handle such conditions, often allowing applicants to extend one district or its permitted uses over a portion of the other district without needing to apply for a change of zone or go to the zoning board of adjustment for variance. That's the case here in Milton, except the ordinance here allows the larger part of the property, not the zone, to extend the district into the larger, in that larger part to the smaller part, but no more than 40 feet. So when you think this through, it doesn't help. It doesn't help because most of the time, the larger part of the district is that area behind that 200 feet, and that's zone just residential. And that's not a bad thing. In most cases, this warning does not help property owners who may wish to sell someday or redevelop at some point, since the highest and best use of the property is restricted, which reduces the property value. Problems for applicants and practitioners arise when the proposed use on the property is prohibited on the other side of the zoning boundary line. Under those circumstances, applicants may face hostile boards like this one, or the zoning board, or opponents in the audience claiming that because such use is prohibited in one of the districts, it requires a use variance to be obtained from the zoning board of adjustment. A use variance especially can often be an insurmountable hurdle, and practitioners must carefully craft a record to support the proposed use for a split-zone parcel. What I'm gonna tell you now is that you may not all, you may not always own your property. At some point, you may wish to sell it as an asset for when you get older, we don't know. Or you may wanna keep it and live on your property for the rest of your lives, or for the rest of the time you own it. The most important thing here is, we're trying to get rid of split-zone lots. We are not changing what the zoning says you can do, and that's the bottom line. Why is that? That's because if you have a house now that you live in, that is an allowed use.
You keep saying "we," Sue. Who is "we"? Did you, is this your proposal, or did you guys already decide that you're forwarding this on into a vote?
No, I'm just trying to explain this to you.
Yes, sir, you keep saying "we," I'm just trying to clarify what you're, what you're saying. Who's "we"?
When he's saying "we," he means the property owners that are affected by this change. That's, that's what he's meaning.
So, in regard to that, you said you put forward this proposal, right? Does it, doesn't it take a, a list of names, 25 people to sign?
Sir, sir, sir.
No.
Let's finish with his presentation and we'll take these questions, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No, the list of 25 names is if a group of citizens want to change zoning.
Don't, don't talk to me, just finish your thing, sir. I'm sorry to have interrupted you, go ahead.
We didn't interrupt you, that's all. That's all, really what I, I'm not sure what I was saying, but it's like a train going down the track sometimes. I'm, I've been derailed. No zoning regulation has changed. None is being proposed to be changed. It's just the zoning district boundary that's being proposed to be changed. So in other words, whatever you're doing now, it's allowed and it will remain allowed, allowable. It will remain permitted, that's a better way to say it. And so, this proposal only changes the zoning district boundary to the, to the rest of your lots. That's all it does. So you won't have a split-zone lot anymore, and it has the effect of possibly increasing your property value. You think about that one too. And by that, I mean not your taxes, but when you sell it, your taxes aren't gonna go up, because I know there'll be questions online. All right, so, there are other places that you can go. If you go online and you say, and I mean anybody, if you go online and you say, "Are split-zone lots bad?" In your browser, you'll see a bunch of stuff come up. One of them will be a planner and surveyor's blog. I'm gonna read you what one surveyor said. "I'm not a real urban planner. I work for a land surveying company, and I'm the guy that does our land development planning for homeowners and land developers. Basically, I take projects through the subdivision and/or site plan permitting process. That being said, from my standpoint, split zoning is a pain in the butt, because if you have one parcel that has two different zones, which set of rules do you, do you use when it's developed? I've designed a couple of residential subdivisions that had split zones, but the comprehensive master plan was residential for the whole parcel. So that wasn't too big of a deal. Basically, we figured out the area encompassed by each of the two different zones and prorated our density accordingly. And that's because, how many units you can put on a property have, have a density calculation, based usually on the size of the lot? I've seen parcels, but never worked on one, that have different master plan designations, half residential and half commercial, or commercial and industrial, so that when you have a whole different list of uses that are permitted outright, not permitted, or conditionally permitted on one but not the other, also the lot dimensions and densities are different. So how do you go about developing a property that has conflicting rules? And that's basically what this is all about. The other challenge in dealing with split zones is that the zoning lines aren't real in respect to how they correlate to the real property. Zoning lines are typically, at least in my neck of the woods, just drawn on an overlay map and are imported into a GIS format. When the zoning line coincides with the property line, we can assume that the intent was for the zone to follow the property boundary and just leave it at that. When the zoning line is hanging out there in the middle of the parcel, and it's drawn to a GIS level of accuracy, which is probably plus or minus 10 feet, how do we go about creating that line in the real world, and who's responsible for deciding where it actually is? And that would be you, okay? And there's more, but I won't read them all. So, I think what we're here, and by "we," I mean the planning board. I think the planning board wants to hear your questions, wants to hear what you think, and they're gonna take notes. This is basically a workshop, they're making no decisions yet. The decision on whether to send this to a public hearing may happen at the end of this meeting. So this is not the end of public comment on this. This is just a, this, here's what the planning board's doing. They're fact-finding. They wanna hear from you. I'm gonna show you a couple of maps. I hope. I tried this last time. Doesn't even recognize me. How do we wake it up?
Is there, are we here on?
Oh, there we are. Oh, goody.
Well, there's the orange loops.
Major White's at it.
All right. So, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start at the south end of, of where this may occur, and just, if you can see my, if you can see my cursor here, we're, we're on White Mountain Highway, coming into town from the south. And this, this is the railroad bridge back here that you crossed over to get here if you came from the south, right here. Brown Road is, comes in somewhere, I don't know why it doesn't show up very well, but Brown Road is like this. This is Charles Street, White Mountain Highway, this is Dawson Street, this is Elm Street, School Street, and Staple Street, this first part of the map, and we will work our way up. Right now, the green here is the High Density Residential Zoning District. And the boundary was set 200 feet from the right-of-way of Elm Street, School Street, Staple Street, and others up above here. And the backside of all the frontage lots is a different zoning district. And in, in all cases, the different zoning district is, is the low-density residential district. Again, there are many uses that are not allowed in the low-density district, but are allowed in the high-density residential district. Residential uses, which, that's what your houses are, they are allowed in both districts. But looking to the future, for both property owners and for potential developers for commercial uses, split-zone lots are not good. And so, all this proposal does is take and expand the district that's along the road to the back property line of every lot. That's, that's what the crosshatch here is, in green. The, this is the back of all the frontage lots, here and here, that's for HDR, and the pink, I hope it will, kinda, kinda chartreuse. Right here is the Commercial Residential Zone, and the red crosshatch is where the expansion of the Commercial Residential Zone would be. And then if we move farther north, and you can see the lots that are frontage lots have turned, the green crosshatch for the HDR zone, and then you will see that Commercial Residential Zone, the crosshatch expands each lot that's a frontage lot in that Commercial Residential Zone to the back boundary of those lots. And I'm gonna stress that no, no changes to the regulations or the rules are in this proposal. Just a change in the zoning district boundary line to follow the property lines, rather than following an imaginary parallel line to the highway. And, that's it. There's one, there's one exception to this rule and this proposal, and that is here, and the lot is, it's 38-4. It's the big lot on the top of Tenerife Mountain. It, it has frontage, but it certainly doesn't make sense to change the zone to Commercial Residential. So that is the one exception here. The 200 feet imaginary line zone boundary will stay the same on that lot.
Sir, could you explain that, please? I don't understand what you mean by "doesn't make sense to do that."
Well, it doesn't make sense to do that, especially because there are conservation easements out there on Tenerife.
Towards Top of Earth.
Yeah, and you really don't want, you really don't want to expand the zone out into that, into that lot, especially, am I right, Ken?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I don't think the Conservation Commission would be too happy with it, or the planning board, if we proposed that.
What, what is it, what is it zoned as right now, sir?
It's still low-density residential.
Okay, thank you.
Because there are only, there are only, I think, four or five, I say, one, two, three, four, there's only four zones in Milton right now. Commercial residential, high-density residential, industrial-commercial, and low-density residential. And if you look at the zoning map around the corner, on the right, you'll see that most of the town, Milton, is zoned low-density residential. So I'm gonna leave that up and let you guys...
Could you scroll down, sir, towards Elm Street?
I can't.
That is a, that is a large lot there on Tenerife. Could you go down to Elm Street now?
Sure.
There's a large block there, too. It's hatched in, is that, is that low-density residential right now, sir?
It's, it's both commer, I'm sorry, it's both high-density residential in the front, the 200 feet, and it is low-density residential in the rest of it.
Now, if I may, I, I think you were here for this, actually, back a year or two ago when Chaney came in, and he asked for, what's that, what was that word called when they, when the zoning board gives you a little leeway and lets you do something that's not zoned for? Was it?
Avariance.
Avariance. Yeah, he asked for avariance, the high, high-density there. So, how do I get rid of this stupid thing? Would this, would this benefit a builder such as, oh, I don't know, Chaney? If we change that to high den, the high-density, you can just go ahead and circumvent the thing that we stepped on last time to stop on? Isn't that really what you're doing here?
Well, that's the effect here.
Absolutely. Okay.
It is.
Thank you.
And if you get up and others get up and say they don't want that to happen on that lot, I'm pretty sure the planning board may move that lot.
You, you've done a wonderful job, I appreciate your presentation, but I don't understand why you're helping me when I don't hear anybody on Elm Street complaining about the way it's zoned. If you had a list of people who said, "Yeah, zoning's a problem on Elm Street," I, you know something, absolutely, you should look at that.
Yep.
But you know something, I don't hear everybody saying that. I think you're fixing it for Chaney.
Thank you.
And that's bullshit.
Excuse me?
Well, I think I'm not. I think I'm not. And I'll tell you why. Because if you get up to this, you've already said it, by the way, but I, I'm gonna tell you, this zoning change does two things for you two different people.
It takes away agricultural uses of the land, you're absolutely right. When you put it to high, high, the high-density, when you take it away from low-density, you lose agricultural part, it's part of your zoning regs. You need a paragraph? You need that? Because you just told everybody no one's gonna lose anything. That's not true. That's not true.
I'm not sure that's exactly what I said. I said you can continue to use your property the way you're using it now. You could change in the future, especially if you wanna nest egg in here in the end of your life, for the rest of your family.
So, so...
However, what I'm getting at is that where these, where these zones, especially the pink zones, not necessarily so much the green HDR zones, why would you zone it 200 feet in? If you wanted it to be a commercial zone, a viable commercial zone, why would you do that? It's bad.
Do you want me to start addressing your questions directly, sir?
No, I don't. Not right now. I want, you come to the podium after.
Sure.
I will say this, that when I told you there were two things for two different people, you didn't even let me finish. You said what the two things were. That's not what I was gonna say.
Okay, well, finish what you want to say.
Well, I've said it a few times. There's good in this for Milton to develop in the place where the town fathers said there should be commercial development. The zoning regulations are laid out in a way that bad commercial development can't happen, and all, all projects have to go to the planning board for their review. All right, we all understand that. But it also has the effect, it's, it's been proven, of increasing the potential value of your property, and by "your," I mean all of these properties, whether you, whether you like it or not, and you don't have to do anything. Your life won't change unless you want it to. You don't have to sell your property, you don't have to put a business on your property, you can continue to live there, and nothing changes.
Well, except...
Now, you're right about that, see, now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what the value is, and that is that your neighbors might do something.
Your value goes up, don't your taxes go up?
No. I'm talking about potential value of a piece of property that's completely Commercial Residential Zone instead of a split-zone lot. That's it in a nutshell. That's it. And then you have to make up your mind whether you're for this, against it, still have questions, still not sure, and that's what we're here for. So I'm gonna turn it, I am gonna turn it over to, to the rest of you.
Go ahead.
So, so I'd just like to clarify one thing. So...
To me?
No, to everybody.
Thank you.
So, we're here to talk about two different zoning changes. Right now, we're only talking about one, and the one we're talking about is the Commercial/Residential High Density Residential Zoning District Revisions. There's another one in here for the Gateway District. So, I know I got two letters, so there may be some people here tonight really confused because they just got the letter saying they're here to talk about the Gateway District, and other people are here because they just got the letter to talk about Commercial Residential High Density Zoning Changes. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody who's here, because if...
And I'm following the agenda, which starts out with, oh, I'm not following the agenda.
Well, it starts out with Gateway District, so I just wanted to make sure that we all know what we're talking about right now, and then we're gonna go into talking about the Gateway District. So, before we go any further, I just kinda wanted to clarify that.
So if anybody likes my comments, please come up to the microphone, state your name, and feel free to talk.
Well, in that regard, sir, we...
Excuse me, sir?
About the Gateway, or...
Would you please come up to the microphone?
Right now, it's...
And your name, please.
First name.
My name is Jason Poth, I live on Elm Street.
Thank you.
In regard to your statement, sir, do you want us to come up and talk about the Gateway District first and hold off for the other stuff? Or do you want us to...
We're gonna go with what we just presented with the Commercial Residential High Density.
So nothing's been presented on the Gateway District at this point. This is nothing to do with the Gateway District proposal. It's a different part of town. So this, what we're talking about now is strictly this one zoning amendment, which talked about this area of town that's been presented.
Wonderful.
Can I ask a quick question?
Excuse me, ma'am. Let you, you got the microphone, let's speak and you can move.
I'd like to, here for my time, go ahead.
Thanks, Jason.
Oh, yeah, something like that.
I have a few questions to ask, but...
Your name, please.
My name is Kristen Ward, I live on Elm Street, I'm Jason's neighbor. So, I'm just gonna ask one right now. These are two different types of zoning amendments, right? So you have the commercial and then you have the residential. I'm just curious as to whether or not this went to a warrant article vote, if they would be two different votes, with the commercial and then for the residential vote.
No, this would be, you either vote to change it, or you vote not to change it.
So, to me, and I don't know if anyone agrees, these are very different things. Like, so I'm for commercial development in town, I think that's a good thing, and I apologize if it affects anyone's property negatively, but I think that the high-density residential housing is very different. So in the letter that was sent out, the front part of the letter stated that there were going to be some changes to Route 25, Route 125, which is White Mountain Highway. There was nothing stated about Elm Street. So unless you turn that letter over and saw that teeny-tiny map that listed information about Elm Street, you really didn't, the first time I read the letter, I was like, "Why did I get this letter? I don't live on 125, this doesn't directly affect me." So I, it just seems, um, kinda shady that Elm Street wasn't written into that letter. And, and I have family members that also live on Elm Street that I shared that I was coming to this meeting tonight, and they were like, "What do you mean? I got a letter about 125." So I, I, I'm just not understanding why they're being lumped into one vote, I guess.
Well, you have property on 125 that is also high-density residential.
I do.
Right. And it comes up Elm Street is high-density residential.
And it comes up Elm Street is high-density residential.
Yep, the first 200 feet.
Right, so now, when you get up into there, and you've got these lots that are half-high-density residential and half-low dens-, uh, low-density residential. What this does is increases the lots that are in the high-density, and a part of it is in low-density, it would increase that whole lot to go into high-density residential.
Right, but how does that correlate to the, uh, commercial?
It doesn't.
Okay.
There's two amendments that...
Right.
We're gonna talk about tonight. We haven't talked about the commercial zoning amendment that's being proposed on Route 125. That's the gateway overlay district. We haven't talked about that yet.
Right, go ahead.
So, I, I think...
I'm not talking about the gateway.
Right, so I think what, what you're asking us is, instead of making this one zoning amendment...
Yeah.
You guys feel that it should be two separate ones, where it's separated out, so we're talking about the, the pink or purple zone as one zoning amendment, and then the green zone as another, that's what you, that's what you're...
Hundred and ten percent.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah.
How come we didn't separate it as, instead of lumping it to one?
Yeah, these are two different, uh...
We haven't written anything yet, sir.
Right, right, so I think that that's...
Right.
Right, but what in the letter is now? Have you read the letter? Okay, so the letter talked about Route 125. It didn't talk about Elm Street.
But this is one of the reasons why we have everybody here and getting all this feedback.
Well, I don't think you have everybody here, because I'm not sure if you're part of...
One person at a time, please.
Sure, I, so I'm not sure if, um, I think a couple of you were part of the zoning board variance denial back in 2017, um, and then I think there might be some new faces. But, uh, I, I just, I, I guess another question I have is, does the planning board decision trump a zoning board variance? I, I assume because a variance wasn't granted, maybe this is coming to light now in the planning board?
The simple answer to that is no, because that's not what's being proposed here.
Okay.
Whatever the planning board decides to do is only going to go into a warrant article that will go to the voters, and here are all the voters.
Okay.
And, and, and I hear what you're saying, and there are three things the planning board could do. The planning board could remove all of the HDR expansion of the zone, and just go with the commercial residential part of it. You could do that. You could separate the two into, you could separate the two into two warrant articles, and then see where the chips fall, or you could remove the lot that you're really concerned about.
Okay, so with that statement being made, um, the lot that I'm really concerned about, and I can't speak for anyone else, is map 42, lot number 11 on Elm Street, which four years ago, uh, five, five years ago, 2017, um, there was certain criteria that that zoning variance needed to meet in order to be passed, and this room was full, there wasn't a seat in the place. Um, Elm Street was listed on the letter that was sent out, I think you would see more people here tonight if Elm Street was listed on this letter. Um, so my concern is, five years ago, it didn't meet the criteria that the zoning board set forth to allow the variance, um, so I, I'm not sure why it's here now for a change, if it was...
Because it's a change to the zoning regulation in the zoning map.
So with the split zones, you talk about, um, how it's kind of a pain to have split zone lots, uh, i- in relation to other towns, have there been multiple residents that have come forward and said, "Hey, I wish my lot, my lot wasn't split-zoned"? Is that the reason that this is here?
Yeah, I don't think I made it clear that the town has some measure of liability for someone who may do that, because split zoning is a bad idea. And I've, I could prove it to you with multiple, multiple articles written by everyone, everybody from New Hampshire Municipal Association to, to land use attorneys in New Hampshire. There is a measure of liability, but you're right, somebody has to say, "You know, you're keeping me from developing my lot the way I want to." By having a zoning boundary in the middle of my lot, where the, where the restrictions are diff-, when the uses allowed are different on either side. That, the town has a responsibility, uh, in their zoning to zone correctly, not incorrect.
I, I wanna say he's absolutely right. He's absolutely right, that, you know, if Mr. Cheney chose to make that the largest pig farm in the state, you know, because it's agricultural, we'd all be kicking our own asses for, you know, with that stink behind us. And I get that there's some legal issues with preventing him from making high dis-, high-density housing back there. However, if you look at his record, he has sued every town that he's building.
Excuse me, this is not about Mr. Cheney.
I agree, sir.
Then why are we bringing it up?
I, I'll, I'll, I'll bring it back in.
Because you're, you're on high-density, where you are now, you're on high-density residential, correct?
I, I have one of the lots, it's both.
Yeah, so it's high-density residential?
At the, at the roof, at the front edge.
Right.
And on the backside, it's low-density. Yes, sir. So, and that, that's part of the point I was making about, I, I don't know anybody's complaining. I'm not, I'm fine with the way it is. I, I have a greater concern with expanding high-density res-, residential all the way up over the hill. I do. Because as we talked about in 2017, it's gonna change the, the, the culture of our street. It's gonna change the culture of our neighborhood. But, to take this back to the points you made, this letter doesn't address everybody involved, and that's why you have the small group you have to, because you said it's gonna affect 125.
So, everybody that got a letter...
The letter was sent to everybody.
The first letter, uh, the, the travesty that was, sent out the day of, right? We'll put that one aside, but this one... Right? Uh, currently, the high-density residential zone and the commercial residential zones both have a swath of designation, approximately 250 feet on either side of Route 125 designated as that use, which the remainder of many of those same lots remain in the low-density residential zoning district. That sound like your stuff? That's your letter. None of this, nothing else on this mentions Elm Street, except for the small maps on it. But, it doesn't match up with the writing. So you have a whole bunch of people who don't know that you're affecting them. So that's the first point. The letter doesn't address who you're affecting. That sounds like a liability issue in itself. Maybe you wanna redo this again, put out the letter again.
Just, most everybody that got that letter had this map on the back, right? Am I correct?
I, I guess, sir.
It was a separate page.
I can't speak for...
It came as two pages.
But it, it came with that letter?
Yes. Because I, I got a letter because I have a property that is in one of those...
Right. And it indicates on this map what roads and, and what the changes are going to be in here.
Can I speak for you for a second?
Please.
We went, we actually went back and forth between our two houses for hours, trying to identify, based on your map, how it was affecting us, why we would get this letter, and what, what, what it was saying. The print's small, small map, and the writing doesn't match the map. Okay? We're both educated people, we have degrees. Okay, it's not that, it's not hard to put in writing, "Hey, if you live on Silver Street, if you live on Elm Street, if you live on 125, it's gonna affect you." We only mentioned 125. Just saying, leaving a lot of people out of the loop. So really, are you getting everybody's comments here today? Probably not. I recommend you put this off, send out another letter, and explain it to everybody. That's the first point. Thank you.
So...
Paul?
So, just a quick question on this, now that, you know, we've been through this a couple of times now. The way, your explanation for doing this is, for instance, in a low-density residential, if I had whatever, lot number X up there, and later on down the road, I had a child that wanted to build a house behind me in a low-density residential, they couldn't do that, correct?
No, it was on a separate lot.
So, I, so that I'm trying to get your point as to why, what, you know, for future development, things like that. Can you amend the, the, the amendment to only do up to one acre or something like that? If people want, if they have an acre or less and wanna expand it to the end of their property lines, they can do that? So it would exclude the large properties? Okay, I wasn't sure.
It's up to you, how many properties.
But we can take out...
Either you bend this proposal or take out.
That's what I'm saying. So we could take out any property over X acres.
Take out those two big lots if we, based off feedback we get, that...
That's what I'm trying to get to people out there. We can, we have full control.
Pushing that too far in.
If you have a quarter acre lot and it's, you know, goes from here to there, I don't think someone's gonna build a strip mall. So it doesn't really matter, but if you have 50 acres, obviously, that's a liability. And we can work this one way or another.
Well, remember, people can merge lots. People can come in and buy this lot, this lot, this lot, this lot, if the people are willing to sell. And then you can do a development when you merge the lots together. There's all kinds of things, property lines don't stay the way they're drawn forever.
Right.
Unless people want them to.
Now, under those conditions, if they, we went ahead and we expanded that out, all those properties would be worth more for a value, so it would cost somebody a lot more to buy up individual lots, because each lot would be worth more, so it would be...
That's the positive, that's the positive that comes up.
Right, exactly, but I'm saying, in general.
The potential positives in what you do here and the potential negatives, and list them out, you know, and, and this isn't just for commercial development, it really has a lot to do with it. Individual property owners, when you make this change, the, the potential value of the property will go up if they ever decide to sell in the future. If you don't, then you're fine. That's, that's, uh, my explanation in a nutshell, it doesn't get any more complicated than that. If, if there is a concern about one or two lots here, take them out of the proposal.
Right. So, so there's a couple of things that I guess I'd like to mention here. I don't necessarily disagree that reading the letter and not looking at the map from what you brought up is, is a bit confusing. I know the conception that it seems to be out there, that it was done intentional, I can tell you right now, it wasn't done intentionally. I think what may have happened there is we were talking about two different things, there were two different letters that went out. The gateway strictly is about Route 125, so my assumption is that paragraph was probably used again in this, and it was inadvertently left off those two streets. So, I get it, but I, that was not the intention of, of the planning board at all. And I guess the other thing that seems to be a little bit confusing tonight is, this is not, this is strictly a workshop, we're strictly asking for feedback. If this is decided to go forward, it then has to be published in the newspaper, it has to have a public hearing, which everybody that's affected or anybody in town can come in and speak. Um, so this is strictly for feedback. Now, another thing that, that, we seem to be really focusing on this, this one lot in a, in a previous proposal, um, I get that that's a concern, I, we can adjust that accordingly. The reason I feel this really came up had nothing to do with that particular lot, and I can completely see and understand where the conception may be from the public, that that's what was trying to be done here, that was not what was trying to be done here. And, and when I hear questions and comments about nobody's complaining, I guess I would challenge that by saying, there's a lot of complaints about how the downtown area looks, and what can we do to downtown to make downtown better and more of a thriving place? And that's really where the planning board was coming from, in my opinion, with this change and this proposal in front of everybody. So, I would just like to encourage everybody to think of it in, in that manner, and there's been a lot of focus on the value of the property, and your property could be worth more in the future. Yes, but in my opinion, the real reason this was being done or, being proposed is to try to make the downtown more of a thriving area in the future. So, I also think we need to try to, we shouldn't talk about previous proposals, what we should look at is say, "Okay, this lot shouldn't be in here, because it's too big of an area, it's going too far back into residential areas," things like that. I think that may be a better way for everybody to move forward and everybody to, uh, gain something out of this.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brown?
Uh, Larry Brown, uh, I'm presently an alternate up through, uh, 2024. Uh, the room is entirely too crowded for somebody who wants to get older even more. But, uh, that map is a perfect explanation, if you will, of why the planning board is trying to plan ahead rather than to react like in 2017 to something that was about to happen. Milton is defined by the railroad, the river, and the road. And there's no room. And meeting after meeting, year after year, the planning board is trying to develop a plan that can present an attractive, vibrant, commercially sustainable, residentially dense, well, not dense, critical mass. If you don't have people, uh, every restaurant is gonna go bankrupt, even with a great menu. And that is the goal of trying to develop a gateway. Gee, I'd like to come farther into this place, it looks pretty good from the first, the first, uh, first look. The revitalization of Marina East and West is part of the revitalization of downtown. It depended on cooperation, it depended on some zoning changes, and the, I'm, I've been doing this since, I think, 2000 was the first time I joined the planning board. And no one has ever tried to put something in place that is going to deliver to injure someone, uh, to make a buck or something like this. That's it. Step, step back, everybody stay healthy.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've, I've heard that, uh, I live up on Elm Street, my name's Frank DeConey, and, uh, I keep hearing that it might increase my property value, and I understand on an individual lot that might happen. Excellent presentation, I'm very impressed, but I don't see how my lot being buried inside of a downtown portsmoke increases my lot value. I moved up here to get away from that. Uh, so, you guys have done a great job. I moved here because of the way it is, I don't wanna see major residential change. Uh, and I know you guys can change the verbiage and set it up however you want, I think personally, I'd rather see this set split apart between the residential and the commercial. You've got people of totally different interests on the commercial side than the residential side, and I think it, it just muddies the water too much when you try to join them. When you try and put too much of a pile together, it's tough to separate, and you end up with a lot of hurt emotions over it. Um, so, it, it's just a suggestion, you guys have, I think I'd be able to make better decisions if it was separated, moving down the road on that, but I'm, I'm, you guys have done a great job, I appreciate it, now. To, to me, I don't wanna see the residential change, I'm, I'm happy living in the woods.
Paul? So, just going on that a little bit, too, I think that's, for people that have just seen this, that's a pretty big bite to chew. I think most people would, would not have a problem with the, the magenta colored part being that's already pretty much the way it is. You know, when you look at it from people's point of view, if they live on the top of the hill on Elm Street, and someone behind them could build something that's not indicative to that area, it might make it a little bit harder to do something like this, so maybe separating it out may be a, a much better idea into two separate things. That, passing this on Elm Street isn't really gonna do much to improve downtown in the grand scheme of things. I think if we take off one bite at a time, and let's get down, down, downtown a little bit better looking, and, I mean, that's much, probably much easier to get through, and to, to, that people wanna see improved than talking about the top of Elm Street. This is my opinion on that.
Taking people off of that, I think that would help with the confusion that some people have had, whether it affects your property or not, and, you know, where it mentioned commercial, if the commercial people interest would be here, and residential, you know your resident.
What you're doing with the high-density residential is...
What, what you're doing with the high density residential is you're not making it commercial.
I, I, I understand that by separating the two items. I think it's easier for people to digest and understand how it individually affects them. Like I said, I, I, I left the high density, so live in low density.
You're in the high density.
Only, only one part of my property I'm quite happy with that.
But you're in the high density.
As you know, right next to me is way too high density. I don't want it behind me or on the other side or.
They can still build condos on low density residential, but that's just another thing.
Yeah, four thousand condos, center condos are a way different situation.
I just have a, a quick comment. I've been on this board since two thousand and ten. The reason I came and get involved in this whole board thing was because how I had properly dealt with it. And I, I'm very strong on property owners' rights. I really believe you have a right to do what you want with your property. Well, you pay your taxes and do your thing. But I also known all these people on this board, Bruce, for a long time now, and not one of them have ever they're above reproach when it comes to, they're not sidelined with any business. They take their jobs seriously and they put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into volunteering their time. Bruce did it for a couple of years for virtually nothing. He cares about this town. We all care about that, this town. That's why we're here. I grew up right in here at a little old camp. So when someone says that, you know, we have an ulterior motive, if I wasn't thick skinned, I'd think that was, you know, insult.
I'm sorry.
So, no, I, no, 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 I'm just saying in general. That's all.
No, I mean, I think it works in the best of the times.
Two and eight our time, and we, we spend time away from our family, our kids, with our stuff for this town. So just keep that in the back of your minds. We're not doing it. It's not an assault on an individual. We're not going out to try to piss everybody off. My first meeting here was the lynching downstairs for the proposed dump. That wasn't a proposal. It was the planning board asking the town people what you want us to do. So these workshops, we get that feedback. It's, we're aways from making a decision. But we want this feedback, and it's positive. It helps us get an avenue and a sense of feeling. So.
It redirects us the way.
Right, so there'll be, you know, a public meeting, and then everybody will know about it, the people that we missed. It was inadvertent that happened, or it was read that way or interpreted that way. That was never the intent of Bruce, Land Use Clerk, Brian, or any of us. So just take that in. We're all human, and we all learn, and we're, have the best interest of this town. Also, we wouldn't waste our time doing these things. That's all I got, Brian.
Thank you. Mary.
Hi, Mary Henderson. So can I just summarize, I think, what you were trying to say to us? So we're basically here with three things. We're here with the residential, and then commercial, which we didn't get to because of this is where it stops and didn't go further up one twenty-five. And then we're here to talk about the overlay.
Right, and we haven't talked about the overlay yet.
So, so basically, we have three meetings that we kind of need to redo? Maybe propose out to have everybody in the area of the residential be notified and come back, and then it looks like the overlay is gonna affect more my end, where it's commercial?
Well, this also affects your end too on this part, on this, that's a small map.
The residential?
Uh, this, up in here is.
Yeah, that's commercial.
Right, well, that's part of this, what we're talking about now. We haven't got that far. We've, we've just been talking Elm Street. We're gonna talk further on the, the upper part.
Oh, okay. All right, I thought, because I got two separate letters, so I thought I was Elm Street and one twenty-five, and then the overlay district.
We'll get to it.
Okay. Just a brief highlight for you.
Thank you, Mary. Yes.
I just have a couple more questions. Uh, Joseph, right? So you stated that, um, you feel that it's very important that landowners be able to use their land the way they want, right? So when people purchase their land, do they know what it's zoned for and what they can do on that land, correct?
I would hope so. That would be due diligence before you made a purchase.
Right, right. So if, if you purchase a lot that is two hundred of the front feet are high density residential and two hun, uh, the additional space behind those two hundred feet are low density residential, you know that anything behind you is low density residential, and so does that property owner that purchased that land. Would be my assumption, right? Okay, so I own a property on Elm Street that has a right of way through it by one of these large parcel landlords.
As of what?
Okay, great. Um, so my concern is when I purchased this property, I knew that there was a large lot behind me that was low density residential. There's a lot of ledge up there. You need to build on two acre parcels. Probably wouldn't be more than thirty homes built, right? So an additional sixty, hundred and twenty cars going by my house to get up there. Um, so, uh, never in a million years did I think somebody's gonna be able to build on quarter acre parcels because it's not zoned that way. Um, and I wouldn't have purchased a, a piece of property that would, that that would be allowed behind me in my backyard. Um, because it would change the character of where I wanted to live. It would allow, uh, I think high density residential allows an apartment building, uh, to be built on it, duplexes, condos. Um, it'll last for a lot more. So I'm okay with a two acre parcel behind me and somebody having a single family home on it or duplex or whatever is allowed. But I'm not okay with there being an apartment building behind me because when I purchased the land, I was not under the assumption that that would happen because it was zoned that way. And I assume that anyone who purchased land behind me, you know, their lot was zoned. So it just brings me back to, you know, if you're a believer in somebody doing what they want to do on their property, they know what they're allowed to do when they purchase that property. So I, it, it just, I, I, I don't, it shouldn't come up later on. Um, because you're totally changing the character of the land behind these property owners who wanted to live in low density residential, who didn't want, you know, apartments behind their house. So I see the benefit and the increase in property costs to folks who can subdivide their land and sell it off in quarter or half acre parcels. Um, I don't see the benefit to somebody who owns a two, three, four, five acre lot, which I think most of the lots on this road are. Um, yeah, I'm not gonna split my two acre lot into a couple of different parcels and build condos on it. It doesn't make sense. It would be stupid to do that. I didn't buy the land to do that. So I just, I, I think it's an interesting point. I think that the property owners knew what they could do with their property when they purchased it. And they just want to, um, to change that rate. And then another question I have is, in high density residential, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have town supplied water and sewer? You don't. Okay, so I think that the master plan says that you need to have municipal water and sewer if you're in high density residential?
Talk about this right here?
Yes.
Uh, Article three of the zoning board?
Uh, thank you. So, um, I, I don't think that the current town infrastructure, uh, supports that. But does anybody know the answer to that? I, I've been in previous meetings where we were.
I think that was answered before.
Yeah, I think it's told that to be black and white.
Excuse me. You finished the end of that sentence. It says, "Developed lots should be connected to Milton Water Sewer District and Milton Sewer District System if available."
That's what it says.
That's what it says. So it cannot, it couldn't have a system and a well on it.
Sure. So, um, in previous meetings, we've also been told that you can't, you can't put, um, wells in on most of that property because of all the ledge up there. So we need to be connected.
That didn't come from the planning board.
Okay, it might have been in a zoning board meeting. I'm not sure. So I'm just confused because it, it, uh, it sounds like you remember it. It's just mixed information that we've been given, so. But that would be a concern also.
It's not ideal. But all wells, I mean, the whole water have ledge. So it's a matter of how they jerk. It would cost me a couple dollars to go deep.
Yeah, there'd be a lot of blasting behind our houses to get in there and.
That was zoned at one time for an airport up there.
A what?
There's gonna be runway up there at one time.
Mr. Bryan, can I bring this up?
Just a second. Matt?
So anybody that doesn't know, I don't live in this area. I'm up on a private road in the Mills. But going off of the few people that we have here in tonight, my suggestion would be to break up the commercial residential into one amendment or one warrant, and then the high density and low density into another. Or just take the low density and high density right out of it completely would be my suggestion. Obviously, it's a whole board decision and, and the, the taxpayers as well. But I feel like one of those two options would alleviate a lot of issues.
And my recommendation for the board, you can consider this, uh, or not, is up to remove all of the high density residential, uh, expansion from the proposal. Take it right off the map.
Motion so stated. Second.
Second it.
I'll third it.
Any discussion? Hold the table. Both?
Because it just seemed to me that, that no one really seemed to be concerned with the commercial portion. It was more the high density residential portion, which is why we have everyone here today. So we can hear this, and you see what happens when we hear, now it's gone. So the commercial, as we stated earlier, it's because we do want to revitalize the downtown area because there's not much going on. So we wanna revitalize it and bring, like, the, of restaurants that are gonna be going in, in, on Marina. We want that kind of stuff in town.
The problem with that, though, is there isn't much in town. That's why we're talking, taking some of the high density and converting that into other uses other than presidential. And that was the purpose of this. Yes, Jock, Danny?
Andy, Tennessee, Northeast Congress. Could you now address the, um, proposed gateway?
One more finish of this, but one way to it.
Okay, okay. I just felt we were stuck.
You can stay up a little longer, Jock. You can stay up a little longer.
I, I have one comment. Um, what about the ball fields and whatnot down at the, being expanded commercial? Doesn't seem to make sense for it to be to take its own property and put it in a commercial zone.
Which is, you're talking, that's part of the gateway.
The beach and across the road where the old Little League field.
I think when that's up here, the gateway.
Right here, I think.
Yeah, that's, that, yeah.
Those are recreational areas. I can't understand why they'd be zoned commercial. That's not, is it? That's my only thing I have any comment on is why you would take the, the beach, the area around the beach and where the Little League field was.
It's just a split. It's a split zone right now.
Why would you put that in a commercial zone? It's a split zone right now. Well, why not take it, just make it community property, which is where it is?
We've, we haven't got that far. We're still working on the Elm Street.
I'm just curious. That's my, that's what I'm just wanting.
Yep.
The why is for doing that.
Any more comments on the, well, there's no comments on the high density.
Maybe I shouldn't comment, but I'm going to real quick. I don't wanna drag this on anymore than we have, but if, if we look at, at this, would it make sense to make these here also commercial? So it, it's more in line with what we're trying to do getting to town? Or do we wanna just let that be for now?
That's a separate issue. You can't, all we're doing here is we're taking split zone lots and we're making them not split zone anyway.
Okay, so we couldn't add into that that we're gonna, we'd have to do a separate one on that? Okay.
You're coming late to the party on this. We need to, we need to, we need to reach out to the public, to the people who are affected, just like we have here. And we've run out of time.
Well, I guess.
That would have to be a separate zoning amendment.
But we have reached out to these people.
Only, only in changing their lots.
Right.
To completely.
I understand that. But I guess I'm just saying this came out of, to me, that came out of what our conversation tonight. I don't know if it's late to the party, but.
Yeah, I misunderstand what you're saying. I thought you were saying.
I'm basing that off from the feedback that we've gotten tonight.
But I, I'm not understanding what you wanna do. You wanna take other lots that are not split zoned and you wanna change the zoning.
Well, they're split zoned right now, and I'm just saying, change it to commercial so it follows, it follows all the magenta lines that we have here, based off the conversation we've had tonight with.
Yeah, well, see, that's, that's changing zoning.
I get it. It's gonna change those lots, but it's still the same people that.
Right, but you're gonna, it's a whole little ballgame because these are just.
It really is a different proposal.
Yeah, that, that would have to be, that would be a good war.
It's only, it's only.
That one's a dump.
It's only what?
Memories.
It's, it's not that many lots, but.
Yeah, it is, but it's just, they would.
I'm just saying, if you're trying to, but we can leave that be for now.
Yeah, we have, we have.
What is that?
Pro number one, yeah. Any more comments on that? Or any, Bruce, we want to move on to the commercial residence?
Yeah, I think the important thing here is to, uh, explain what, what the overlay district does. Just starting with the sleep on here. All me. All right. Okay. Screen work. Okay. That's very good. So what's being proposed here is a gateway overlay district. It doesn't do, it doesn't change any of the underlying zoning, whether it is commercial residential or whether it's low density residential. This is an overlay district's proposal that supersedes the, uh, the zoning regulations for the underlying districts. What that means is there's going to be new regulations called gateway overlay district regulations added to the zoning ordinance. Lots here, uh, really are, uh, I think the planning board worked on this, uh, uh, pretty hard over the last month or two. Uh, this to them represents lots that are reasonably part of the southern gateway to the village. And you, let's see, and again, this is the railroad. Okay, so this is Route seventy-five. This is the railroad. It crosses under, under the bridge just before you get here. That's where we are right now, right there. Let's see, Hydroplant Road. This is the, I think this is the Moose Club. This parcel right here is the parcel where the Milton Vet is. Many of these parcels along here are either vacant land or underutilized.
Are there residences on it yet?
Yes. Yes, and they can remain residences. That's basically what this is all about. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the proposed regulation. How do I get out of here? Escape? I'm gonna leave it like this. What I wanna do is just read a couple of things from this gateway overlay district, uh, regulations is being put, uh, up possibly by the planning board to the voters as a warrant article. It would be the regulations and the map. The ordinance was adopted to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the town of Milton and its citizens, including protection of the environment, conservation of land, energy, and natural resources, reduction in vehicular traffic congestion, more efficient use of public funds, health benefits of a pedestrian environment, preservation of community character, education and recreation, reduction in sprawl development, and improvement of the built environment. Here's the purpose. Purpose of this gateway business district is to provide an environment that, that encourages efficient and attractive commercial development along New Hampshire Route one twenty-five that is a gateway to the village. The minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet encourages a mix of various sized commercial uses. The district provides economic development opportunities for a mix of land uses, including retail sales, personal and professional services, restaurants, vehicle refueling, recharging stations, automobile sales, hotels, offices, banks, and theaters. Purpose of the district is to enhance the economic vitality, business diversity, accessibility, and visual appeal of Milton's Gateway Business District in a manner that's consistent with the landscape and architecture of the. the landscape and architecture of the town's agricultural tradition. The intent of the district is to foster development of a vibrant mixed-use district with a cohesive street layout and architectural character that includes commercial, residential, and civic uses, and integration of open spaces, transit, bicycle, and pedestrian accommodations. And this says that the boundaries of the district are shown on the official zoning map of the town of Milton as amended. Based on that plan that I just showed you, the provisions of this district shall be mandatory for development projects within the district. Development projects submitted for approval under this zoning district shall be subject to applicable requirements of the subdivision and site plan review regulations of the town of Milton. When in conflict, the provisions of the district shall take precedence over those of other ordinances, regulations, and standards except the local health and fire and safety ordinances and building codes. Now, this is important to read, and then, and then what I'm going to do is I'm going to go to the backside of this to show you what the design guidelines are, but really what, what this does is, it, it's an attempt to make you, when you drive into Milton, have a Milton-like experience rather than just strip malls. It may happen, by the way. It's the desire of the town that all these activities be developed in a manner that both serves the business interests contained in the district and in a manner that conveys a campus atmosphere to those arriving here. Traffic circulation and alternate modes of transportation need to be provided for, as does parking for employees and visitors alike, a wide variety of industrial. Supporting commercial development and open space and recreational amenities are desired in accordance with the various planning efforts undertaken by the town in recent years, primarily the 2017 master plan amendment to the land use chapter, and any other planning efforts as completed and applicable. All these activities are envisioned as being developed in a manner that involves quality design of landscaping, a high level of quality in individual building and site design, which considers the context of the site in its natural environment and flexibility on the part of the town to achieve the design suggested in those documents. There are permitted uses in a, in a table at the back end of this. No building should be located on a lot near to the front side or rear lot line than the minimum setbacks that are below, and they are 30 feet on the front, 20 feet on the side, 20 feet in the back. And the planning board may reduce those setbacks as set forth in Section 70, which is a conditional use section. If a property of much more than one existing in one and/or proposed right-of-way, the building setback has to be 30 feet from each right-of-way. The planning board during site plan review may allow certain signs, utility systems, including power and communication-related facilities within the setback areas. I think the important thing here is, minimum green space has to be at least 25% of the total land area, dedicated as green space, landscaping or undeveloped areas. Any new proposed development has to, has to be, has to come before the planning board for site plan review and comply with the following standards. All drainage shall be entirely controlled and reintegrated on-site, and stormwater infrastructure shall conform to MS4 requirements in the site plan and subdivision regulations. Site layout should attempt to reflect a compact village style, and all new site work shall implement low-impact development, that's a LID best management practices. And then there are several things that have to be done. The applicant can choose which ones they're going to do. And one of them is sustainable site and building design, where the proposed development of the property shall be determined to meet the certified level of leadership and energy and environmental design certification or higher. Projects need not actually receive the LEED certification, but must be able to demonstrate that the project would meet the certified level of that certification criteria. No outdoor storage. Any outdoors, no outdoor storage allowed unless approved as part of a site plan, but if you have it, it has to be visually screened from streets and adjacent property. You're not going to be doing things like bulk storage of gasoline, chemicals, or anything like that. Let's see, landscaping standards have to comply with site plan regulations, and then there's a lot of stuff about signs. The purpose of the building and site design standards is to maintain the quality and character of the community. They don't want poorly planned and executed development that detracts from the character and function of the built environment. In other words, they want this to look like Milton. They want it to look just like when you go into the village, as you enter the gateway Let's see. Within development, project site design elements should be compatible with small New England village character and the town's agricultural history. Haste of planning, building architecture has to be designed with an attractive appearance. All architectural details shall be related to an overall architectural design approach I'm trying to hit the high spots. All electrical utilities have to be underground. Planning board can issue conditional use permits for dimensional relief. Board has the authority to grant or deny that. And you can see there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff. What, what a commercial developer will get out of this is flexibility, but they have to do certain things to make it look like the town wants it to look. The district defined is exactly the way the map that you saw earlier, I can bring it back up, but the, but the lots are actually called out here. There is a use table. Use table is very simplified. It says that you can do agriculture and forestry by conditional use permit. It says that you can do civic and institutional uses by conditional use permit. It says that you can do commercial, which includes retail, sales, and service business and professional services, I've already read that to you, including veterinary hospitals, indoor entertainment complexes, et cetera, et cetera, especially restaurants, food service, bars, and entertainment, et cetera. Drive-through services only by conditional use permit. Light manufacturing facility is by conditional use permit. Food service bar entertainment is permitted. Mixed uses are permitted, that's permitted by right, but they still have to go to the planning board for site plan review, especially when they ask for conditional use permits. Residential, including multifamily and other residential uses are by conditional use permit, which includes multifamily, four-plus units, workforce housing, manufactured housing, home occupations, accessory dwelling units, bed and breakfast stands, hotels, motels, and hostels. And we're going to look at footnote four for the one that I just read. Footnote four says, "Multifamily uses shall not be permitted unless proposed with other permitted or conditional use permit uses of land." Basically, my easiest, oh my God, my easiest way of explaining this. And it brings me back to the beginning. Wow. Sorry, everybody. My easiest way of explaining this restriction is that, I'll use Dover as, as an example. Dover has gateway district zoning on Dover Point Road, where they allow residential on the second floor of places where they have commercial on the first floor. And it looks very good. It looks a lot like Dover is supposed to look like. That's the intent here, but only from a Milton standpoint. Where mixed uses, you can see up here, possibly you can't see it, but it's right there, there's a footnote, number two. It says mixed use includes residential and commercial and/or professional business uses in combination in one or several structures. Non-residential use shall comprise less than 50% of the gross floor area. So, the, the uses are very, they're very nonspecific here. Some are specifically called out in the right column, but really, this proposal is meant to be a real gateway district as you drive into Milton. And that's it. I can bring the map back up again.
Mr. Brown. Bruce, would you just highlight again the advantages to the lake in terms of low-impact development, our obligations to the MS4 federal EPA program, and as discreetly as possible, talk about how small box construction should not be a butler building in 20 years due destruction, but should represent the community over time and be taxable long-term?
All right, so let's, let's start with one that I can remember first. The architectural standards, guidelines that are at the backside of these regulations that are being proposed, really call out the type of construction that you expect to see in the town of Milton. But it, it definitely is not metal buildings, it is definitely not butler buildings or the like. My story is always this. When I was the town planner in Moultonboro, I fought with dollar, general, tooth, and nail with the planning board to ensure that they didn't build a butler building that they could abandon in 20 years and leave it to become an indoor flea market or, or nothing, because it didn't mean anything to them. And because it didn't mean anything to them, it didn't mean anything to the citizens of the town afterwards. So what, what were we after? We were after stick-built construction that looks, that looks like what was always built here in the town, that would long continue after that business that built it was gone, and be an asset to the town. That's what this is all about. That's why there's architectural guidelines in this proposal. What was the second one, Larry?
Low, low impact as it protects the lake and our obligations to MS4 that we have to do anyway.
Okay, I'm going to try to do this in a nutshell. A low-impact development is a, is a scheme where the developers don't use the traditional engineered methods for handling stormwater. The traditional methods are to put pipes in the ground, to put storm drains with sops that hold the water, and then the water goes somewhere, maybe down to the river, maybe to the lake eventually. Low-impact development does away with all that and uses other infrastructure ideas, such as rain gardens and places where the water can infiltrate and perk and clean, clean itself up. Basically, that, that's, that's low-impact development. That is also called for in these regulations. The third one, Larry?
MS4.
Well, the MS4 really does stand for municipal small permit that's required by the US and New Hampshire EPA. Milton is an MS4 community. Milton has to do a lot of inspections, maintenance, corrections to all of their stormwater infrastructure, and that would be outfalls, that would be culverts under the roads in, in areas that are identified by the state and the US EPA in Milton. And there's three distinct areas. Part of the, part of the gateway district is in one of those, what's known as an impaired area. And so, we don't want to be building new built environment that is not built per the standards that are laid out in the MS4 regulations. In other words, why build something that doesn't work? You've got to fix it later. That's it. That what you were looking for?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. All right.
Any questions?
Why, why would this not extend up 75 if wouldn't?
Limited access highway, we can't get curb cuts through the state.
What's that?
We can't get curb cuts through the state on that, that's a limited access highway.
So you couldn't require?
We can't require anything.
That commercial to adhere to these same regulations?
You can't, can't build anything out there because you haven't got access. I think they've allowed one curb cut on the right-hand side of 75, and you've got to put a road in the length of it to build anything behind it, so.
But if, if they were to get permission from the state to build, they then would be able to build anywhere they want.
We've tried that. We've tried for curb cuts.
Well, well, you still have your regular site plan regulations.
Right.
And, and most of that land is, is zoned commercial, residential, or industrial.
Right.
Anyway, I think that the answer to your question is that the planning board, in looking at the map, decided that their proposal for the gateway overlay district really should be just Route 125 at that certain point south up to basically the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
So what, I, I think what you're trying to say is why, how come we didn't, that one spot, that there is some commercial development already? How come we're not considering that, so they, so they have to follow this, so it looks like Milton? Is that what you're?
Yeah, well, I mean, you can look across the railroad track and still see the property, depending on where it is, but it just seemed like a, also, coming into town, a lot of people come off of 16 down 75, and you're in, going in there, why would we not want to extend the same, make it look nicer if you're gonna build, if you ever are capable of building, to that same stretch, because you're still coming, you don't want to drive, buy a dump, dump, dump. Oh, here's the nice Milton Town Road, 125. That's, you know, it's just, it's a small stretch of road, but probably a lot of people come off of 16. You go, you see a mobile station, you're like, just go back and get some gas. You can't do gas.
That is Division 6 State of New Hampshire, that's why it's not open. So, this is all, everything on, everything on 75 is controlled by Division 6 State of New Hampshire DOT, every bit of it. Fazell built that in there. That, one entrance covers anything on that side of the road if he develops it. That one, and it's, the same thing on the other side.
No, I, I know the state's, you know, lets, I'm just saying, you know, once somebody does somehow, whether or not they go through whatever channels they have to do, gets permission to build, it would be nice to see that it's also going to be built to these same high-quality standards.
So what he's saying is have that covered, and if they ever get it, well, then they still have to go by this.
And again, I think it may be too late this time, but if you actually, if it passes, if you, if you even, you know, send this to public hearing, and it becomes a warrant article that goes to the voters, you can always expand the gateway district next year. Because I, I, I think that Eric has a great point.
Yeah.
Is this proposal on the town website for everybody to look at?
I believe it is. All these maps, did they get them in the description?
I sent them to be added to the town website. I'm not in charge of putting things on the town website, and neither is Suzanne, so when you ask us if it's on the website, yes, it should be, it should be on the town website, on the planning board page, on the left, it should say, ordinance is under consideration by the planning board, and there should be what I just read from and the maps, but I'm not guaranteeing. But it has to be. If, if this board sends this to a public hearing, the next day, all of that has to be available either here in person or on the website for convenience.
Any more questions or comments? Anyone want to make a motion to put this on for a public hearing?
Motion to put it forward for public hearing. One second.
Discussion.
You've got to say what the date is, too.
17?
Right.
January 17th, 6/3.
Right, and so what I wanted to tell everybody is, we may have to wait until next year.
Yep.
If, if you don't want to meet on a day that's not. you don't want to meet on a day that's not a regular planning board meeting. Okay, so here we go, January 18th. That's your regular meeting day. However, this is important dates to local officials, 2022 SB 2, March town meeting calendar. Monday, January 17th is the last day to hold the first public hearing by the planning board on proposed adoption or amendment of the zoning ordinance. And if a second public hearing is anticipated, the last day to hold that second public hearing is January 31st. Because the final proposal must be included in the warrant and posted by January 31st, it's strongly recommended that the first hearing be held before this date. So this is the, this is the big deal, they stop your motion. If the board is not willing to hold a public hearing on a day other than your regular meeting day, and it is a holiday, we won't be able to do any of this this year. None of this will go to the voters. So this is the procs here.
You know, well, we have overtime. We work on a holiday, we get paid, right?
Triple time, right?
I've been 23 years, haven't been timed out yet, so let's figure out something here.
I personally think there's been too much work put into this, and I mean, all these people came out tonight to decide that, oh, we're going to wait till next year. I think that's kind of, I think we need to make it happen, have a meeting. It's going to go to the voters, and there's going to be an official public hearing on this, but I think, I think we as a board.
Coming up with a date.
Need to just make it happen.
We're looking at, making sure it's, we don't have to do it by the 11.
All right, you also need to know.
You've got another problem, though.
You also need to know.
Ten days.
That we have to publish a notice of this public hearing.
Ten days before.
In a newspaper, most likely Foster's, 10 days clear. In other words, it's got to be posted, at least, we have to have at least 10 days between tomorrow and January 16th. And that means that it has to be in the paper by January 7th at the latest. We don't have an answer from Foster. We've been trying to get an answer since last week, so we still may be derailed, but you can still make the motion if you're all willing to have a public hearing on the 17th.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to have a hearing, a public hearing on the 17th.
Second.
Discussion.
And, and?
Six thirty.
Please, I'm trying to help you here.
I know, yeah.
And to schedule a second public hearing if required.
And a second, that's Bruce said.
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
I'm gone.
On January 25th.
You better be here, Ryan. Yeah, I'm good.
And again, it's important to say if required in your motion, because you would not hold that second public hearing unless at the first public hearing, after you hear what the public has to say about these two amendments, that you significantly change how it's laid out, the wording, the maps. If you do that, then you'll have to hold a second public hearing. If you don't change anything at the first public hearing at the end of the meeting, you can tell everybody that's there, we are not holding the second public hearing, but we're going to put it into one public notice to be published in the paper on the 7th. Seventeenth, twenty-fifth, if required.
How my motion to do that?
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a couple of comments I'd like to make to the general public right now. Been doing this for 24 years. We have worked as a board, not myself, but and others, to try to increase this town, to make it something. It's been very, very slow and hard. There's a few of us here that remember no highway, and I bet you half of you don't even realize that. This town boomed. We had Spinelli's Restaurant, we had Top of the Hill, we had the Donut Dome, we had everything.
Donut Dome rocked.
That highway went through and killed us, and ever since, people don't want to change. We need it. This town is dying, literally dying. Think about things before you make decisions. Anything else? I've done this for 24 years. I've sat here and fought with people day in and day out, dumps, you name it, I fought it. And it's always been the planning board's fault because you're putting it together. No, we're not. It's before us. I really take offense to that with the Cheney thing. I really truly do, sir. You really bothered me about that.
With the what, sir?
I took offense to that.
Yeah, so what?
On when you're accusing us of catering to Mr. Cheney. I don't feel that was called for or necessary.
You made your hair stand up, sir, that's good. I don't want you to like Cheney.
I moved here in 1980. I've seen all kinds of change.
When this is over, let's go have a beer, you'll feel better.
And I see, another suggestion, if you don't want changes, get on the board.
Well, and they can always vote no when the amendments, if the amendments get on the warrant. If you don't like it, vote no. That's it.
You could have more turnout.
Well, the public hearing is coming up on the 17th, and it'll be in the paper, it'll be posted, and many places you will not receive individual letters, but for sure, I'm not going to say that. If we can get Foster's to publish it within the statutory 10-day guideline, then we're going to move forward. If we can't, this all dies.
Isn't it, isn't, isn't it, as long as it's posted in a public place, like for the school board, it was posted here, it was posted at the school, that made it legal to have a public hearing because it was posted in the town within 10 days?
Zoning amendments are a different animal. We have to follow the state law on zoning amendments. The state law says it has to be published in a newspaper 10 days clear, and we have 10 days clear on the 7th. That's a couple of days from now.
As a side, I think we should petition the state.
Online.
Who actually gets the paper delivered?
Well, they're electronic.
Well, Larry does.
But we're going to post it in the post office, in the library, in town hall, and on the website, just like we always do. We'll have a blurb, I think, on the social media about what the amendments, what they really mean.
Okay, handle business. Not hearing any?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Nick.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming, and thanks for the feedback.